The meeting documents are on the end of the counter next to Commissioner Bender. And if you need a listening device, Robert's in the front row and he could help you with that. We'll move on to routine business. Item number one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number two is approve the commission meeting minutes from November 29, 2016. Is there a motion?
Approve the minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
No second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number three is bills to be paid in the amount of $527,005.3. Is there a motion?
Pay the bills.
Second?
Second.
Any comments? Commissioner Burr?
We have near 200 individual bills for mental illness. They're not all for a large amount, but they do go up to a couple hundred dollars and it's quite a few bills.
Quite a few bills. Okay, I have a motion and a second on the bills. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number four is reports. Item A is the Minnehaha County Highway Report for November 2016, and that's on file at the auditor's office. Item number five is personnel actions. Item A is consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any questions for Jen on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number B is consider a motion for recognizing significant employee anniversaries for December 2016.
Good morning, Genotics with Human Resources. We have a bunch of anniversaries this month with five years of service, DJ Boothey, who is our highway superintendent, and with 10 years of service, Melinda Storley, who is the commission assistant, Kevin Keegan, who is a corporal at the jail, Kurt Shawnaman, also a corporal at the jail, Heather Richards, who is a correctional officer at the jail, Matt Larson, who's a correction system operator at the jail, Craig Whitrock, who is an air guard security officer, too, out at the air guard, and Tom Inez, who is a juvenile correctional worker at JDC. We just want to take this opportunity to thank them for all their years of service here with us.
Is anybody here?
DJ's here.
DJ's here. Thank you for five years, DJ. I was actually here when we hired you. In fact, I guess Jean wasn't, but the rest of us were, so. And we don't need a motion on that, which is what I did say, but we don't. And the next one is item C, which is recognize significant volunteers in the county government for November 2016.
Another strong month of volunteers from Minnehaha County. We had 271 people who generously volunteered in a number of different departments, including the museum, sheriff's office, public defender's office, JDC, emergency management, and the jail. Again, the volunteers provide a great service for the county and we thank them for their time.
Okay, thank you, Jen. Item number D is a special commission action.
And I'll let Erin McGowan.
Okay, Erin.
Good morning, Commissioner Erin McGowan, Minnehaha County State's Attorney. We've been talking about this for some time. I briefed the commission on my concerns with Marcy's Law back in the budget process. That election is over and now we are seeing kind of the perfect storm across the state of the ramifications of Constitutional Amendment S. This measure expands the required services of the State's Attorney's Office some tenfold. It has broadened the definition of victim, not only to include victims of violent crimes, but victims of basically any crime, any property crime, any loss of property, any psychological loss, and not just the center victim, but all peripheral victims and family members beyond the victim. This is something we've been scrambling with since the state canvass and certification of the election to implement this. I serve on the Attorney General's Task Force where statewide we are trying to interpret this. I did not rush to the commission immediately. I wanted to kind of get a sense of what the change in responsibilities would be. I know Pennington County, right out of the box, hired four new employees to deal with their responsibilities with Marcy's Law. Pennington County has, with the new hires, eight victim witness assistants. I can tell you, our office handles approximately twice as many criminal filings every year as Pennington County. I'm asking to put us up to eight total victim witness assistants. One of those would be specific to our juvenile division. Our juvenile division deals with a lot of property crimes, sometimes well in excess of 100 victims on car burglaries and crime sprees. A lot of those crimes that that broadened definition under Marcy's Law has expanded the scope of our responsibilities in the State's Attorney's Office. In the juvenile division, we handle some 3,000 cases a year, including about 5,000 victims of those 3,000 crimes. Proponents of Marcy's Law said that all of the concerns we had would be answered by the automated SAVN system. That does not include any juvenile offenses. So those are all man hours, personnel hours, that have to be put into those victim services, notifications, working on restitution with all of those victims. So that has really expanded the scope of responsibilities for that division. With the new hire for 2017, we will be at four victim witness assistants. I'm asking for three more in our adult criminal division, just to meet the constitutional requirements of Measure S. We currently have, we've had nine homicides so far this year. I don't want to water down our current services on our most serious crimes. Those cases are very complex. They require numerous meetings with the families of those victims. Our child rape cases are very time intensive. We spend a lot of time with our child victims and their guardians, walking them through the court process. I don't want to water down those services or any of our other serious crimes, our robberies and burglaries and domestic violence. But we are now responsible for providing all of these services for property crimes and all of these other crimes that we weren't previously responsible for. Based on my calculations, these are the necessary hires I need to have just to be in constitutional compliance with Marcy's Law. I think there are, there's certainly a possibility there will be additional requests down the road. I believe we will get some legislative response to help interpret and limit the scope of Marcy's Law, but we can't change the letter of the law in that constitutional amendment, which requires that these rights are enacted at the time of victimization. So they, these are from, from out of the gate. Oftentimes, over the weekends, we have 60 or 70 people in custody. We get those arrest reports at seven in the morning. We have to have those criminal complaints filed by 10:30 in the morning, and we have those cases on the court docket at 1:30 in the afternoon. We have to notify those victims. We can't do so by mail. They might not even have access to the SAVN system at that time. So we have a lot of responsibilities every morning to provide those victims with a notice of those bond hearings on day one. So this is what we feel is a responsible response to Marcy's Law at this point in the proceedings, and would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions for Erin right now. Jean?
Erin, I know yesterday the State's Attorney's, Attorney General's Office issued an opinion limiting the scope, it appears, of Marcy's Law, and I'd just like you to address how that affects your request here this morning.
And I serve on the Attorney General's Task Force and have spent a lot of time talking to Attorney General Jackley about these issues. The initial opinion issued yesterday from the Attorney General's Office is very limited in its scope of what problems with Marcy's Law it was addressing. It was really an immediate response to releasing some of the initial addresses and log information to members of the media and the general public. It didn't change or advise on any of the other ramifications or consequences of Marcy's Law relative to my office's responsibilities. I think it was a response for the media to have access to information that they'd always had previously, to provide some cover for local law enforcement agencies to continue to release that information. There was a big problem with the accident reports and Department of Public Safety and a lot of limits placed on those public records that this limited scope advisory opinion from the Attorney General put out. So I don't see anything from that opinion that will change the unintended consequences on our office. I think there are some legislative fixes to limit our liability if we are not in compliance with this constitutional amendment. I think there are some further clarifications as to victims invoking or opting in or opting out. There have been a lot of those discussions. My chief civil deputy and I, and I know Mark Vargo in Pennington County and many other prosecutors across the state, feel that that first section in Measure S is the controlling language where it says, "These rights shall apply at the time of victimization." Proponents of Marcy's Law tell us we are misinterpreting that, but that is what the black letter law of this constitutional amendment says, and I think to read it any way, any other way would be irresponsible and perhaps open us to liability. They didn't include language about opting in or victims being responsible to make this request. I think the California measure says some seven times that at the request of the victim, these rights apply. That's not how our language reads in this constitutional amendment. So unfortunately, we are left with a very poor drafting and ambiguous language of Measure S. We are left to try to limit our liability and best interpret it responsibly for the county, but that's my reading of it.
Additional questions? Commissioner Heiberg? Commissioner Bender?
So if we were to approve these positions that you're requesting, can you help quantify just what the cost is to the county for those positions?
A rough estimate based on, you know, depending on benefits and things of that nature would be around $250,000 a year.
My concern is we don't have, this is an unbudgeted item, and we have no money for $250,000. That is a huge concern. How long before your task force meets again, and are they planning on having some idea by the end of January?
I believe we will be meeting quite often by teleconference. We divided into subgroups yesterday. I intend to serve on a legislative subcommittee to look at some of those legislative fixes. There's going to be a subcommittee dealing with jails and corrections on their new responsibilities under this measure, so I hope to have some answers. You know, the legislative process will be months down the road. I would hope for an emergency clause to be attached to any legislation in response to Marcy's Law, but we're really looking down the road. You know, I, obviously, this wasn't in the budget. This was an election and in my humble opinion, this was the will of the people to pass this measure, and we have to be in constitutional compliance with it, knowing that it's going to cost the county more money than was budgeted. We brought those concerns to the commission during the budget process, that this would be a huge problem for us, but I can't run an office that's not compliant with the South Dakota Constitution, so this is what we are asking for in response at this time.
Additional questions? Comments? Commissioner Bender?
Because my question, Erin, would be is if this opt-in or opt-out decision is made and it's reversed, are you going to lay those four or five people off?
I don't know that it'll have a huge impact on what we are doing. We have been proactive in working with our bigger businesses that are frequent victims of thefts, and they have agreed to sign a waiver to limit our notifications on every single petty theft from these stores. I don't know that that'll have an impact if they further define that. I don't know that they can outside of what is in the constitutional amendment based on the language in the first section. But either way, we have an immediate responsibility to notify victims of court dates. The expanded rule and definitions absolutely has increased our services across the board for all of these new crimes. We have already seen a watering down in our current services just based on the expanded responsibilities and the definitions under the statute where our current three victim witness assistants are late to return calls to victims because they have all these other types of cases. I think they already had, they were averaging around 300 cases per victim witness assistant before the passing of Marcy's Law. So I don't know that that would be necessary. Certainly something we would consider if our responsibilities were reduced drastically by some legislative response. You know, I'm not going to staff the office for people that aren't busy, and that's something we'd have to take a serious look at, Commissioner.
Commissioner Bender?
Follow-up question, if you would. Is the governor's office or anyone else taking a look at the enhancement of the SAVN system?
I know that Attorney General Jackley was looking at putting in $400,000 into SAVN to expand it as far as notification of victims' automated system. I think there was an interface and other things they're looking at with that system. They will expand it within the scope of crimes that are now required to have victim notifications under Marcy's Law. It still will not include the juvenile system. I've never heard any word of any inclusion of the juvenile justice system into the SAVN program, which is very problematic for my office. We still have the problem with the language requires that the victims have access to the government lawyer. We have a lot of problems with the increased communication between our attorneys and victim witness assistants to victims with plea negotiations. The reality of our world is a lot of times we'll have 20 cases set for a pre-trial. Frequently, the defense attorney has been able to, has been unable to contact their client until that court appearance where they show up and they can finally, you know, communicate with their client about what it means. There are plea negotiations that happen during that time where they say, "He won't do this, but he'll do this," and we'll come to an agreement. That really has been paralyzed by the new responsibilities under Measure S. So long answer to a short question, but you know, those are some concerns I have.
If I, one more, I'm sorry.
Sure.
Why aren't they include, including the juvenile category in the seven responsibilities?
I don't know if it has to do with, I mean, obviously, the juvenile proceedings have always been confidential. However, victims of, victim, victims of crimes of juvenile offenders have been able to attend court proceedings. I would assume it has something, something to do with the confidentiality. It's a, it's a whole different system with petitions versus, you know, criminal complaints and indictments and things. If they would be able to expand that down the road, we'd certainly be in favor of it because it would, you know, help us with our responsibilities.
How many, excuse me, Commissioner Kelly?
Erin, it's, it's not unusual to open, what, 20, 25 felonies on a Monday? Are you doing about 40 to 50 a week? I think Archie has new felonies.
We're doing between 60 and 80 felonies a week. I know the week of Thanksgiving, just the first three days that week, we had 44 new felonies in three days, so it continues to rise.
So that, in addition to all the misdemeanors, how do you, is 130 kind of the magic deal when they either get bond or don't get bond? And how do you notify these victims at that point? How do you even know who all the victims are?
Well, we don't know under the expanded definition. We have to, you know, have family members come to us to let us know that they want to be part of the process. We have law enforcement handing out the Marcy's Law cards to the primary victim at the time. We know who that is. We don't know every relative of that individual. We don't know any, everybody that wants to be part of that process, but they are notified at that time. When my office gets the arrest reports that morning, our victim witness assistants are frantically trying to call any contact information we have for those victims. We will have victims that don't have electronic devices, that don't have a permanent address, maybe transient. We'll send letters out initially, but of course, they can't get that by the 130 court appearance. So the responsibilities of our office are, we are scrambling to be constitutionally compliant because there are so many limitations on what we are able to do in that short timeframe.
Well, and the, if I may, the legislature is really limited on what they could do to a constitutional amendment. I mean, they, they can make some small changes, but I don't think they really, ultimately, this is going to end up Supreme Court.
And I, I think that's fair, Commissioner. I, I believe because of the ambiguous language that's overly broad in Marcy's Law, I think it is open to a constitutional challenge. Again, that's months down the road. You know, in a perfect world, they would have gone through the legislature and through committee and tried to update anything they thought was wrong with their Crime Victims Act that's been on the books for 25 years, but they didn't do that. So we are left with the, the language in there. I think that's a possibility. I don't know if it's a probability, but I think it is open to a constitutional challenge.
And that leads me to, no matter how we do this, there's going to be probably a year or two years before we really see an interpretation. I think your immediate needs, and I'd support it, are right now, and, and no matter what happens, and yes, you may, you know, if, if the whole thing were turned over, that'd be a different story, but I don't think it's going to happen. So I, I, I think I'd support your request.
Additional comments?
Madam Chair. Erin, I appreciate the quandary you have and the needs that you have, but are four new people what we need, or could we have two new people and a couple of contractors, something like that? Because potentially, all of this could change a bit, and maybe we don't need four, and maybe we need eight, but, or whatever. Could we get, until we really know, do we want to add FTEs, so to speak?
And it's a fair question, and it's why I kind of delayed making this request. I didn't just come in like other counties and get help initially. And talking to my staff and our current victim witness assistants and attorneys, you know, this is a real specialty position in our office that I would not be comfortable contracting out. Our victim witness assistants, the vast majority have always been masters-level individuals that have, I think, the hardest job in the, in the office. If you look at the, the dynamics in a lot of our domestic situations, keeping people engaged in part of the, the process and providing them with adequate resources for them and their families, oftentimes, you'll have the, the sole provider for a family in custody, and you've got a victim out there struggling to make ends meet with, with children, and a lot of those dynamics that, you know, this is an important job in our office. This is the, these are the minimum number of employees I feel we need to have to be constitutionally compliant. I included a lower level, I think a level 12, a legal office assistant to handle the busy work with some of the mailings and data entry. That's a lower level than a victim witness assistant to, as a cost-saving measure, without just hiring grade 16 employees. But with the complexity of it, as well as the requirements of the, of the state statute as far as who's able to attend grand jury proceedings to assist these victims and provide them with services in court and things, it's really limited to that specific grade 16 victim witness assistant.
Additional comments? Commissioner Bender?
I understand your issues, and I'm concerned that we're going to have to address these at some point, and I don't necessarily think the constitutional vote was well informed other than the plea that the movie star made. But I think one of the questions I have for right now is, we also have a constitutional responsibility to give you a balanced budget, and are we going to have any additional requests to supplement this year's budget? And how does that $250,000 affect 2017's budget, and where do we take that from?
Carol, do you have an answer?
I don't, no.
So we have, we have to have an answer, I think. We don't have auditors up here either, do we?
Because I think if I remember, we have to have some identifiable location to take it from, correct? Or at least that conversation.
Bob, you have some answers for us?
I'm unprepared for this here. I should get yours. Bob Litz from the Auditor's Office. I guess I'm a little unprepared for this. We did have a sidebar conversation the other day with Gerald about supplements coming forward, you know, that we anticipate coming there, and I can certainly get that information for you. I could run downstairs if you want to address this topic in a minute. What was, what was the actual question? It was, we have to identify a source for this money. Is that accurate?
Well, that and the fact that you and I talked about supplement concerns, but this was not included in that conversation.
No, it was not.
So I think we need to have the whole picture before we start deciding which piece of this gets funded and which doesn't, because we have other departments right now that aren't going to meet their budget, correct?
That's correct, and I'm one of them.
The assumption is that they're not meeting their budget.
Yes, that's correct.
I think we need more than just one week to have a sidebar discussion about this, and we need to talk more in detail and then get back to him, to Erin, as soon as we can. But I don't want to fly by the seat of my pants based on an assumption this is going to be passed and we are going to have a balanced budget at the end of this year, which may or may not happen.
And well, you know, we at the Auditor's Office had anticipated there being some additional expenses with the advent of Marcy's Law, but we had no idea what that figure might be until today, so.
I think that you need to get together some numbers for us and also for numbers for 2017 as far as how we're going to fund this.
2017, I think we've got well in hand, with the exception of this year, so. I mean, the, the 16 going into 17, those supplements, I think we've got most of those, the regular department ones, but this Marcy's Law, something else that, you know, what Erin has just outlined, we'll have to go over that with him.
But we're not looking at 16 on this. We're looking at 17.
You're looking at part of 16. It's going, he's going to be trying to hire someone as soon as possible, I'm sure, but the other issue is, is there are other supplements that we're going to need.
I think we need a dollar amount.
There certainly are, and courts is one of them, this issue aside, so.
Commissioner Heiberg, so are we looking for a motion to defer this action until next week when we can get further budgetary information?
Can you have it by next week and get together with Erin and get the numbers?
Sir, I believe we could. We need to just get together there.
And we have to get with, with, with the human resources, too, and make sure we get our numbers right.
Yes.
I make a motion to defer until next week?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Erin. Okay, item number eight is applications for abatement. There are none. Item number seven is notices and requests. There are none. Item number eight is planning and zoning notices. Item A is the first reading and authorized a Minnehaha County auditor to publish notice of hearing on January 10, 2017, at 9:00 a.m. for a text amendment to rural addressing ordinances, MC 21-93. Good morning, Scott.
Thank you. Good morning, Scott Anderson, Planning Director. Today, I'm asking for you to authorize the auditor to publish a hearing notice for a meeting, for a public hearing on January 10, 2017. This would be a very minor change to Section 2A of our rural addressing ordinance, which further defines how townships will reimburse the county for signs that are placed in joint right-ofways. So at that time, this is a request that is coming forth from the Highway Department. We did meet with the Township Association a week ago, Monday, let them know. It's already, it's already a requirement in the ordinance that they pay for the signs. This just basically clarifies a little bit more of what standard they are obligated to use, and so I'd be glad to answer any questions you have.
Any questions for Scott? Commissioner Burr?
So Scott, basically, we're deleting one sentence and adding that other text that's in bold. Is that?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Scott, Commissioner Kelly?
The one question I had, and I can't find it right now, it referred to state highways and intersections of state highways and township roads. Should that be county highways or what?
Well, it, it talks about the intersections of those jurisdictions, and in the case where township road intersects a state highway, it says the county shall continue to repair and replace those signs. But if it's a township and a county highway, then the township will pay those, and it talks about the standard, a standard which is on file at the county highway department. So they need to follow those standards.
Okay.
If there are no more questions? Question that I had was that currently, I mean, currently where it says is the townships shall be, shall reimburse the county for all costs associated, and so the way I read the new text is that now the townships will be responsible to put those signs back up themselves, whereas before we had the, county was doing that. I'm just wondering if, what type of discussion there was at the, at the meeting, at the county, at the township meeting about that, because I believe that we have like a vehicle and a crew that knows how to put up signs, and I'm just wondering what their availability is to being able to put these signs up where before we were doing it and they were paying us, and now they're going to be responsible to get them up, and what is, how is that going to look? And if they complained about that at all?
Well, they didn't, that was, of course, made clear to the townships, and I know that, as you indicated, we, the county highway department has sort of a sign crew that, that does this. This was a, this was a request that was brought forth by, by the county highway department to me, and this isn't necessarily a planning ordinance. This is an ordinance of the counties. I just sort of administer it on behalf of the county. But this request did come from the county highway department, so perhaps we would ask the, the highway superintendent to better address that.
DJ, that would be my concern, is that we do have a sign crew, and now we are asking townships when, I don't know if, how they go about doing it. Do they have full-time staff that are going to be able to do it, or they're going to have to say, "Oh, Henry, you got to get off there and put that sign up because somebody knocked it down," whereas with us, we've already got a designated crew. So I'm just concerned about this actually getting done in a timely fashion.
I understand your concern, Commissioner. We're essentially just trying to comply with the agreements that the townships signed with the state of South Dakota to participate in this project, the countywide signing project. In that agreement, they state that they will take care of all of the signage within their jurisdictions, and so as it sits today, before this is changed, any sign that's knocked down, knocked down on a township road, those townships do go take care of, with the exception of those green street signs. And those rural addressing signs, for whatever reason, have always been a sign that the county highway department has gone and taken care of. And so with the new agreement that they signed with the state, it says that they will take care of all of their signs, and so we're just trying to comply with that agreement.
So this, this change that's in here doesn't have to do with if a stop sign falls down? Excuse me? down, excuse me, on a county road? This only applies to green signs?
The changes for the green signs, yes.
And they're okay with that?
If, if there's a stop sign that goes down on a township road right now, the township would go and take care of it.
Okay. Do they understand that that's what they're doing? I mean, and that's fine, I just want to make sure that it was clear.
Some of them might understand and then some of them certainly are confused, just, just by observing the, the board meeting that, that was a month or a week ago, last Monday.
Additional questions?
Well, the, the only full-time employee of the township is the sup, super, supervisor or superintendent, whatever. The greater guy.
I think every township might be, operate a little bit differently. Not every township has a full-time greater, more to greater road maintenance person. The, the township boards are all the same, but every township handles their road maintenance a little bit different. When they have signs that go down, I think most of them are contracting with a, with a signing company to take care of the sign issues. And, and I think that this change is certainly open for more discussion, especially at that public hearing that, that we're noticing, so.
Notices go out or is this the only notice that those townships will have?
I think maybe Scott might be able to speak to that.
Okay.
This is, the notices are published in the three official papers of the county and that is the extent of the notice. If you'd like me to send out a hearing notice to, an additional hearing notice to each county supervisor, I'd be glad to do that as well, whatever your direction would be.
I think that makes sense.
I think that makes sense to send one to the, to the superintendent or whoever that responsible person is so that they understand, you know, and I don't know if they need an explanation as to how it, how this ruling changes things. They just, I just don't want them to be blindsided.
Well, as you know, there's three county supervisors and there's a chairman and I will send it out to the chairman
Okay.
that we have on record, so.
So Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to authorize the auditor to publish notice and, and have Scott send a notice to the chairperson of each township.
Okay.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you, Scott.
Item number nine is petition for compromise of lien. Item A is DPNO number 49671 in the amount of $799.60. Robert?
Commissioners, good morning. Robert Wilson of the Commission Office. This application comes to you from the, an applicant who is looking for a compromise and release in full as it applies to the applicant. The lien was identified as the applicant was going through the, the process preparing to close on the purchase of a home. And the, the lien was incurred for, in two different time periods for public defender services. And again, the, the total amount here is $799.60. The, the applicant came into our office and said, these are not charges I incurred. Please, please help me out. And that's not an uncommon thing that we hear, but looking into this, this case, there were some that were, some circumstances of this lien that were a little unique. The, the lien is in the name of the, the applicant's father. The, the applicant's father is, is listed as the, the primary person on the lien. The applicant is listed as the spouse. And so that, I, I will say that's the first time I've seen a
Gender?
Well, a father of a different generational, within the same family, listed as, as spouse. So applicant is the son of the primary person listed here. And in doing a little more research on this, and Melinda Storley in our office has researched this quite, quite diligently, found that the, the liens confirmed with the Public Defender's Office, these charges were actually for services provided to a brother of the, of the applicant. So you've got the lien primarily in the name of the father, the spouse is listed as the son who's trying, who's attempting to purchase the home, and then another son of the primary leeny brother of the applicant is the one who incurred these charges. So our request would be to compromise and release as it applies to the applicant leaving the, the full amount, the 700, or transferring the $799.40 into the, the name of the brother and there is a current lien account in the brother's name that this could be transferred on to.
So basically we would release the father and the son and move that $799.60 against the other son and it looks like he does have a wife listed behind that.
I don't think we're supposed to remove it from the father, however. I think the idea is just to move it, remove it from the applicant and leave it on the, on the father and the other son. That's the proposed motion that you provided to us.
That wasn't the way. That is right? We're leaving the father on it?
Yes.
In the memo, that's how the motion reads at the bottom.
Okay. Okay.
Basically, we're just removing the name of the applicant.
Yes.
And substituting the new
Yes.
Correct name.
Yes.
Okay.
Was that your motion, Commissioner?
That's my motion.
I'll second it. I do have a point after we finish this, I'd like to ask about.
We have a motion and a second. I would comment too that for people who don't get to see, see everything we see, these names are extremely confusing and so that's why. It's just a matter of letters, so it's very difficult. Commissioner Barth?
Well, go ahead.
If you would like, I can read the resolution that was prepared for us. It says, remove file receipt 101251 dated, I think that's February 1st, 2013 in the amount of $463.40 and file number 222817 dated August 13th, 2012 in the amount of $336.20 from DPNO 49671 and place those portions of the lien on DPNO 63873 in the name of the applicant's brother. Does not say anything about his father.
Nope, that's, yeah. That's not what I'm, yeah. That's, that's what the end of this one says.
So do we include the father or not?
The memo that I have is different, so I don't know why there's two different memos because the memo I have
One's different.
Yep. Do you want to refer this to old business? And Robert, you can clean this up for us because I don't want to put this on the wrong person because I think we're supposed, from what I'm reading, I think we're supposed to remove the father too. But maybe we can defer this to the end of the meeting, to old business, if that would be?
I think the question would be is, is the brother, when he incurred these charges, was he 18 years of age or older? If he is, he's responsible for his own problem.
Yeah. We will get back to you.
Okay.
Are we okay with deferring?
I think if we can defer this to old business, please?
I'll withdraw my motion and move to defer to later in the, in the meeting.
Is that okay with you, Commissioner Benega?
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Okay. So we will defer item number nine to old business.
Do we need to vote on that deferral or?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to comment, the, the names are extremely similar and they are not common names around here. And obviously this is a question of probably data input by a human being. And I'm wondering if the state's attorney might know with our new computerized case management if these kinds of mistakes will be reduced because if it's in there correctly in the computer, it shouldn't, you know, we wouldn't have people transcribing it two or three times.
Really simply, it comes over from the public defender's office or a public advocate's office if it's a internal office, or it comes over on a voucher from a private attorney if it's court-appointed that way. However, there's no direct import of data from that program into the auditor's lien file. So there always will have to be some human intervention here. I'm guessing it was just a honest error in, in that process before.
Absolutely.
But I don't think our new system will necessarily guard against that without vigilance on the human side.
Each time it's transcribed though by a human being, there's a chance it'll be messed up.
Okay. With that, we will move on to opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone who would like to speak about anything that is not on our agenda today? All right. That will move on to regular business. Item number 10, 10 is consider a resolution to remove 30 bridge weight loads limits set by Minnehaha County Resolution MC 15-75 and to set load limits on 27 Minnehaha County highway bridges as recommended. Come on, DJ, again.
Morning, Commissioners. DJ Booth, the highway superintendent. Each fall or early winter, we redo our bridge weight load limit ordinance and, or resolution, excuse me. And usually it's a result of some construction that we completed over the summertime. Sometimes it's a result of the bridge inspections that we completed that summer. Thankfully, we did not have any new weight restrictions imposed as a result of our inspections that we completed this summer and so we are removing three weight load restrictions because of bridge replacements or bridge rehail, but rehabilitation in, in one case. And so our new 27 bridge postings include three postings on county highways and 24 bridge postings on township secondary roads. 16 of those 27 bridges are in our long-range plan for either rehabilitation project or replacement project. And so in the next five years, we hope to take care of 16 more at a minimum. And so with those comments, I would entertain any questions or a motion to approve the resolution that's presented for the 27 bridge postings. And a new map has been provided with your packet that shows the locations of those, of those bridges.
My paper copy doesn't quite say exactly what you said, DJ. It says to remove 30 bridge weight load limits and to set weight load limits on 27. So it's a
There are existing, in the existing resolution, there's 30 postings and so we are removing all 30 of those and then we, we reset the new 27.
Okay.
And so it's kind of a play on words a little bit. But the 27 that we're setting are existing within the 30 that are being removed. And the reason that we do that is so we have a clean resolution every year and we're not having to research old resolutions to determine what the resolution, or to determine what the bridge weight load limit is on any particular structure.
Make a motion to approve the resolution on the bridges.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. I believe this next one is the one I have to recuse myself from, am I right? Nope, not yet. Okay. Next one is not. Item number 11 is authorize the chair to sign right-of-way purchase agreements for two parcels of land associated with the reconstruction project of bridge number 50-129-063. Do we want to, do you want to go through the next part? Item A and then you want to do item B or do you want me to read them?
I can do item A first.
Okay.
Commissioners, this bridge is just north of Lyons on County Highway 114 and we have two right-of-way agreements set that are needing to be executed prior to us advertising for the replacement plans, the project that we're gonna be doing next year in 2017 to replace this structure. The first agreement is between Minnehaha County and Charles and Robbie Burgraff in the amount of $1,329.58 and this is for point, 0.21 acres described as lot H2 in the southeast quarter of the southeast quarter of Section 31 Township 104 North, range 50 West of the 5th Principal Meridian in Minnehaha County. This 0.21 acre parcel is, in addition to the existing 50 feet of right-of-way, it's on the north side of the roadway and, and we acquire an additional 25 feet of right-of-way whenever we have a structure and that's to allow for maintenance of the bridge structures in the future. And so for this parcel, we'll have approximately 75 feet from the section line of right-of-way and the payment to the Burgraffs for this agreement is $1,329.58.
One correction, correction, I think, the way it's printed on my paper is southeast 1.4 of the southeast one-quarter section. Just want to make sure we have
It does say that in the agenda, I see, but it should say the southeast quarter of the southeast quarter.
Okay. Just so that's incorrect. Any questions on that?
No.
Okay.
I'll make the motion then to
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. And item B is similar?
Very similar indeed. It's on the south side of the road, the same structure. This is an agreement between Minnehaha County and David and Dixie K. Rogness in the amount of $2,800 for 0.28 acres described as lot H3 in the east 32 rods of the northeast quarter Section 6 Township 103 North, range 50 West of the 5th Principal Meridian, Minnehaha County, South Dakota. And in this case, we do not have 50 feet of right-of-way on the south side of the road and so this H lot includes the 17 additional feet in order to go from 33 feet to 50 feet plus the 25 additional feet of right-of-way which is needed along the structure length for future maintenance needs. This agreement is in the amount of $2,800.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. The next one, I'm going to recuse myself, so you'll take over, have to step out.
Item number 12 is to authorize the chair to sign a purchase agreement between Minnehaha County and Tatanca LLP in the amount of $13,625 for the wetland functional capacity unit credits for Highway Project 50-129060 deferred from November 22nd. DJ?
Commissioners, this is for the same project that we were just speaking of, the bridge just on County Highway 114 North of Lyons. During the design of this project, our design consultant investigated the wetlands. They delineated the wetlands and determined that we were impacting 1.00 acres of wetlands. They then worked with the Army Corps of Engineers to determine that the functional capacity units that we're impacting is 0.89, which is a fancy way of saying that the quality of the one acre of the wetland is, is not a standard quality, it's 89% standard quality. And so we need to either mitigate that and monitor that wetland mitigation for the life of that wet, mitigated wetland, or we can contract with a company such as Tatanca LLP and they've already mitigated several wetlands and we can purchase 0.89 credits from them in order to offset the impact that we will be making to the wetlands as part of our construction project. Because we are not a water resource agency in, in the business of owning and managing wetlands, it is best for us to purchase those credits from an agency such as Tatanca LLP. And so we are requesting your authorization to do today as we've done on past projects to purchase 0.89 functional capacity units for $13,625.
Any questions, questions for DJ?
I'll ask you a question, but I'll make a motion to approve it.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve now? Are there any questions?
DJ, this is just a one-time payment, right?
This is a one-time payment, yes, yes. And we've done similar payments to Tatanca, but they were for other projects and I'm sure we'll be doing more in the future.
If I may, you know, today is your, we just did your five-year anniversary. Does it seem longer or shorter than five years?
I don't think you have to answer that.
Time flies when you're having fun, Commissioner Barth.
I think you ought to ask him that.
Yeah.
Any other questions for DJ?
Well, just, this goes away forever then.
For us, this will go away forever.
No federal agents is gonna come in and raise a stink because this, this is not considered a wetland anymore, is that what it is?
That's, that's correct. And in our bridge site location, we aren't going to have to worry about this 1-point acres of wetland any longer. Tatanca will be responsible for, for the long-term management of the wetland that they have on their property.
If there are any questions, I just have a simple question. What is Tatanca and why would they be interested in this?
It's, it's a company that was, it was, it's a company that was created for the purpose of mitigating wetlands and managing wetlands. They're a water resources group and, and they sell these credits to, mostly public agencies, but sometimes developers or farmers that have to mitigate wetlands from their property. And it's because people like me or, or certain farmers, they're not in the business of, of mitigating wetlands and they see this as an easy way out of that requirement. And so it's, it's a great program. The Corps of Engineers regulates this program and they don't, they don't just let any company get into this business. And so from what I've been told, in the state of South Dakota, Tatanca is the only company that has approved to do this work. They certainly are in this eastern part of the state, the only company.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, we have a motion and a second to authorize the chair to sign the agreement. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Thank you.
Item number thirteen is consider a motion to reappoint Arthur Kearns III and Roger Trevine to a second three-year term on the Suland Heritage Museum Board of Directors. Good morning, Bill.
Good morning, commissioners. Bill Hoskins, Director of the Suland Heritage Museums. Um, both of these individuals, Arthur Kearns and Roger Trevine, have served on the museum board. Um, they've had, uh, they, they've both had about seventy percent attendance over the three-year time period at all, all the meetings. Arthur is a retired general contractor who's now working as a business manager for his wife's dance studio. Roger is a CPA with I. Bailey Companies in Sioux Falls. Um, they, they, they've both been very good, uh, board members, I think Commissioner Barth can speak to that as well, and, uh, I would recommend their reappointment.
Okay, any questions? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Bill. Item number fourteen is authorize the chairman to sign the two thousand seventeen addendum to the health care services agreement between Minnehaha County and Armor Corrections Health Services for the jail and detox center. Good morning, Jeff.
Good morning, Jeff Gromer, the warden at the jail. I'm just calling to present the armor contract addendum. The current contract with armor expires on the fir- thirty-first of this month. The original contract started in two thousand fourteen with three years and two one, one-year extensions included in there. This is the first of those one-year extensions. Um, as noted in the briefing memo, there is an increase to the management fee and the projected fee cost, um, but I do think this is the best solution the county has at the time for jail, medical care and the detox center.
Is there a motion?
Move for approval, second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item number fifteen is liaison reports. Are there any reports? Commissioner Bender?
Um, I just want to report that we had a homeless advisory board meeting yesterday, um, and they were able to provide a, a number of statistics. They're now through the network of care, able to gather quite a bit better statistics, and they're still working on those, but one that I thought was just particularly, um, worthy of attention, you know, particularly as, as our, um, as we struggle to house folks uh, under our county's responsibilities, that in, um, Sioux Falls alone, there's a waiting list of two thousand individuals, um, for affordable housing, and that that approximate time to fulfill that waitlist is three and a half years. In comparison, for example, to Pennington County, um, they have a waitlist of one thousand seven hundred and ninety, and they're able to fill that in sixteen to eighteen months. So it continues to be a significant issue here.
That does. Any other reports? I, just a reminder that the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners, um, regional luncheon is tomorrow at eleven-thirty, I believe, um, and we are meeting at Blue Haven, which is out by Wild Water West, and that's, um, Minnehaha County is the host of it this month, so. Is there any new business? And old business, we will return to item number nineteen. Uh, nine, excuse me. Nineteen isn't even on here, nine.
Next week.
Commissioners, thank you again. I do apologize for that confusion. I think we've got it figured out of where, uh, um, that happened, and we'll follow up on that af- after the meeting. But what I wanted to, what I did check on and, and have confirmed, the age of the brother, uh, the brother is, uh, twenty-nine years old, was twenty-four and twenty-five years old at the time that those, uh, that those public defender charges were incurred by the, by the brother and not by the, by the applicant. So what we are, uh, looking for, uh, would be looking for from you here would be two motions. One to remove the applicant's name from DPNO four-nine-six-seven-one with no payment. That would leave it solely in the name of the father. And then a second motion, remove file receipt number one zero one two-five-one dated January thirteenth of two thousand eleven in the amount of four hundred sixty-three dollars and forty cents, and receipt number two-two-two eight-one-seven dated August thirteenth of two thousand twelve in the amount of three hundred and thirty, three hundred and thirty-six dollars and twenty cents from DPNO four-nine-six-seven-one and place those portions of the lien onto DPNO six-three-eight-seven-three in the name of the brother's applicant.
Commissioner Hager, could I- Commissioner Bender.
Um, so, this is constantly a frustration for me, but here, there is no excuse that these names are similar then. I mean, two people got named on this who were not even involved in the criminal proceeding, so it's not, I would, I would appreciate if you guys could get back to us as to how this particular error occurred, because if the criminal was not even a minor, and he's not listed anywhere, and two family members that weren't involved in the proceedings get listed, that's a fairly significant error in my mind, and I'd like some explanation as to how that happened and how we can make sure it doesn't happen in the future.
Aye, we will follow up on that, and we will get back to you.
Okay. We would need a motion.
I'll make a motion, uh, as outlined by, uh, Robert Wilson.
I'll second, so this is the first motion?
This would be the motion to take it away from-
The applicant.
The applicant.
Okay, I'll second that.
Your motion is second to remove the, the applicant from the lien. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. We need another motion.
I'll make a motion to put it on the brother, and I will mispronounce his name, so I'm like, won't do that.
And it's to remove it from the father. It will remove it from the father and put it on the brother who actually incurred the charges.
Correct.
I'll second that motion.
And a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Commissioner Barth had a comment.
Not yet.
Oh, okay, okay.
I have a comment, though.
Okay, is there any old business? Commissioner Barth.
Um, I just see that Kristen Trana is in the room, and she's on our list as, uh,